When we get started with the agenda portion of the meeting, we have an approval of minutes and we go to the court correspondents by clerk. Then we have reorganization matters, election of temporary chairperson TK Shammy nomination, second vote, and so on and so forth. And we have chairman will call for the nomination of council president from 2019 to 2020. Please sign on all phones. Then we have council president post with nomination of vice president from 2019 to 2020. And we have orders on second reading done. And we have orders on first reading. Number one, an order to amend and supplement the advisory to orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10, that's 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Schedule 22, Traffic Control Signals, delete French Street and Joyce Comer Avenue, add French Street and Joyce Comer Avenue Traffic Signal Plan, August 13, 2014, timing scheduled June 15, 2016. Then we have resolutions, we adopt 2019 meeting schedule two, approve agenda amendments, three, council designation of liaison to various authorities, Board of Education, Councilman Glenn Fleming, Housing Authority, Rebecca Escobar, Human Relations, John Anderson, Park and Authority, Kevin Egan, and Citizens Recreation, Councilman Glenn Fleming. Four, designation of council members to planning board, Councilmember Suzanne Socor-Ludwig. Five, designation of city council members to Board of Directors of City Market, Councilmember Suzanne Socor-Ludwig. Six, approved temporary city budget. Seven, designate of depositories and cash management for 2019, fixed interest rate on delinquent taxes, water and sewer changes. Nine, authorized collection of tax delinquencies of less than $10 in 2019. Ten, authorized direct mailing charges and costs associated with tax sale. Eleven, authorized chief financial officer to sell bond anticipation or capital notes at private sale for 2019. Twelve, authorized tax collector to make tax funds less than $10 for 2019. Thirteen, authorized city engineer to execute land use regulatory LURP, TWA forms, and soil erosion and sediment control application for 2019. Fourteen, authorized city engineer mayor to execute the right of entry permit forms in 2019. Fifteen, authorized city engineer to execute hold harmless indemnity agreements in 2019. Sixteen, authorized tax successor to file tax appeals with special counsel to file counter claims before the Middlesex County Tax Board and/or New Jersey Tax Court. Seventeen, designate public agency compliance officer Marie James in 2019. Eighteen, resolution authorizing contract with certain approved state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to NJSA 40A, that's 11, 11 to 12A, by purchasing agent. Nineteen, authorized advertisement and receipt of bids for various goods and supplies and services in 2019. Twenty, authorized city engineer to sign a site remediation project, documents submitted to NJDPC. Twenty-one, resolution authorizing cancellation of various outstanding checks. Twenty-two, advising consent to park authority reappointment, name Anthony Caputo expires December 31, 2023, five years. Twenty-three, advising consent to traffic commission reappointment, Keith Jones II, expires December 31, 2022 years. Twenty-four, advising consent to library board trustees reappointment, Beth Ben expires December 31, 2023, five years. Twenty-five, advice of consent to property maintenance code, Board of Appeals appointment, name Ronald Shand expires December 31, 2020. Twenty-six, advising consent to cable television citizens advisory committee reappointments and appointments, name Jennifer Bradshaw expires December 31, 2021, three years. Name Michelle Draper, Board of Education representative, expires December 31, 2019, one year. Name Vidal Ortiz, Library Board Representative, expires December 31, 2019, one year. Twenty-seven, advising consent to rent control board reappointments and appointments, name Carmen Lopez, homeowner representative, expires December 31, 2021. Name Barbara Black, alternative member, alternate member, expires December 31, 2019, one year. Name Darian Martin, student representative, expires December 31, 2019, one year. Twenty-eight, advising consent to citizen advisory board appointment, names Regina Abizen, Norrie Duritz, Carol Jones, Ella Mitchell, Lynch Ortry Owens, Maria Coca-Cola, Rhoda Scott, Violetta Valesko, expires December 31, 2022, year term. Twenty-nine, advising consent to arts council reappointment, Kelly White, Jennifer Sevilla, Cassandra Alvarez, Mariano, expires December 31, 2021. Thirty, advising consent to parks and gardens reappointments, name Keith Jones II, Susan Painter, Salvador Salsa, expires December 31, 2021, three years. Thirty-one, advising consent to Board of Ethics reappointments, name Clarida Capone Harvard, Reverend Lawrence Carrington, Lauren Carrington, and Anthony Jones, expires December 31, 2023. Thirty-two, designation of official newspaper for 2019. Thirty-three, reauthorized brief one redeem tax sales certificates. Thirty-four, authorized tax collectors to transfer credits on several taxes and utility accounts. Thirty-five, advising consent to mayor appointments, Daniel Terese, City Administrator TK Shammy, City Attorney, Thomas Malinki, Director of Engineering and Public Works, Douglas Pettit, Director of Finance, Robert Rawls, Director of Fire, Andy Caputo, Director of Police, Melanie Ford, Director of Social Services, Lexie Wallace, Director of Utility. And thirty-six, appointment of city clerk Leslie R. Zelldon. And then we have items for discussion by council and then dates to remember. This meeting will call the order with the clerk, Chris Young, please call him.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here, thank you. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied with the annual notice and gave sufficient notice of the time and place and the conduct of all public meetings in the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. The City Hall of New Brunswick, Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. We please rise to the plate of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We please stand for moments of silence and keep in thoughts and prayers all those that still have lost loved ones or all those that have been going through this holiday season, and please pray for our country in current state that way. Thank you. Motion to approve the amendments.
Yes, motion to approve minutes, sir.
No, we don't need a minute.
It's approved in a minute.
I know, it's okay, just keep it in practice. All right, so we go to any reports of correspondence by clerk.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, if you please read those.
Item number one, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol Beverage Control in regards to issuing authorities and licensees concerning special conditions. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate department.
Absolutely. Should read slowly. All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, now we go to reorganization matters. Do we nominate?
Call for a nomination of a temporary chairperson at this time as president.
All right, we're going to open up the floor to nominations of temporary chairpersons.
Nominate TK Shammy, the temporary chair.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you, it's an honor to be your temporary chairperson, members of council. At this time, I would call for nomination for council president for the 2019-2020 term. Are there, is there a motion?
Motion? Yes, enthusiastically. I care, enthusiastically. John Anderson, vice president.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Okay, I would ask the clerk to a roll call.
Sure. Council President, I'm sorry, councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. See, here he goes.
Seeing that nomination having been carried, I'll turn the meeting over to the new elected president, and I would ask that the clerk swear him in as the new council president for 2019-2020.
I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the government established. And to the government established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. Of the people. I do further solemnly swear. I do further solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of. Of the office of. Council President. Council President. Of the city of New Brunswick. Of the city of New Brunswick. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. There's no right there. It's Paul Anderson. It's the one there, right? This is Paul Terry. At this time, we'll call for nominations for a council vice president.
Nominate Suzanne Socor-Ludwig?
We have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Council Vice President.
Council Vice President.
Of the city of New Brunswick.
Of the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Just a brief round to thank everybody, and obviously I have former presidents here that I can rely on, reorganize up here, certainly we rely upon, we handle a lot of things. Next, we have no ordinances on second reading. We do have an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory to orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations, Schedule 22, Traffic Control Signals, delete French Street and Joyce Comer Avenue, add French Street and Joyce Comer Avenue Traffic Signal Plan, August 13, 2014, and timing scheduled June 15, 2016.
Move the ordinance setting down January 16 at 6:30 PM, same date to advertise.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We now have resolutions, we'll do actually resolutions one through 35 first. So, any member of the public, the public comment, if you have anything, please give your name and address to the record. For that, you have a one-time shot up to the microphone, you have up to five minutes, and it'll now be a running clock.
Oh, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, today, may I ask why are you changing the rules?
Try out, try out.
Try out having the clock running while you're talking, so that it takes away time.
Unless you grab it out of stock, it's fine.
What's that?
Unless you grab it out of stock, it's fine, too.
It's not that, it's just that, you know, we have an established precedent, and there's no reason to change it unless there was a problem, were the meetings running too long?
There's lots of different things, that's the weird part, the wishful.
Well, I think it's just another chip away at the democracy, unfortunately, and I think that, you know, over, over the time that I've been in New Brunswick, the council's been less transparent, and this is just one way that you're chipping away at democracy. So I don't know why you would have to make that change, or I noticed that the change, I guess, been implemented previously in the prior meeting, or was the city clerk ordered, was the city clerk ordered not to let the clock?
Not as big as I run, so that's just the way I'm going to do it.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd like you to reconsider, but I'll move on. So I see a lot of good people being appointed to position of power, I do see the slate of department heads also, and for the record, if you tell me, is Anthony Caputo here today?
I don't see him.
I believe every only person except Director Rawls is here. Did you ask these folks to be here?
I didn't know.
For their advice and, you were going to advise and consent to them, but you didn't want them here in case there are any questions that came up?
I don't know, that's up to the mayor, I mean, I'm asking if they want, because some people have been here before, where if they like to come, it's great, but if they don't, that's one of them.
Okay, you know, the reason I ask is usually, you're, you're giving your consent, you're advising consenting to them, you know, typically wouldn't you want them here to answer questions, that would be a best practice, but I do see, I notice Mr. Terese and Mr. Wallace are going to be consented to be permanent, right, they're not going to be in acting capacity.
I believe that's what it says.
Okay, and the only other question then would be, who's going to be the planning director, is there somebody serving in acting capacity right now as planning?
I don't believe that's advising consent of council, but I do believe that the mayor has somebody to run.
Yeah, for the record.
Who is that? Mr. Dominguez, I guess.
Mr. Dominguez, his name is the active at this point.
Thank you, and so that covers all the departments there. I guess the only other thing, I'll just say that, you know, I know the city clerk's office very well, and I know that Ms. Zelldon's been a very helpful person there, and I'm happy to see she's going to be promoted to city clerk if you approve that resolution. Also, you know, believe it or not, I really appreciate the work of Mr. Terese as somebody who's been a part of seven different lawsuits, I think, against him. I will say this, he is a stand-up guy, a gentleman, and a very professional person who, you know, despite whatever disagreements we may have had, has always been honest, forthright, and upfront with me, and helpful to me, honestly, in my search for records and answers to questions, so I wish him all the best with his new position, and same to everybody else who's stepping into new roles, congratulations to you and your vice president, and wish you all the best.
Something I guess that would bother you.
Anybody else in the public? Say it again.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And now we do Resolution 36.
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of council, members of the public, R-011936, by the municipal council, whereas by the New Brunswick City Council, that Leslie R. Zelldon be and hereby is appointed as city clerk of the city of New Brunswick for a three-year term, commencing January 2, 2019, and expiring January 1, 2022. The council was so inclined, entertain a motion after a public comment, should be a few questions.
Other comments, right? All right, is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on that resolution number 36? I see none.
So far.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Congratulations. You can swear in, Shammy, Long, Family, I think they're here, they can come forward, Family.
Anybody come on, let's.
Come on, come on down.
Before I do this, let me just say, this is probably one of the most pleasurable things I've done as city attorney. He's very good.
Thank you.
Ready?
Ready.
I, Leslie R. Zelldon.
I, Leslie R. Zelldon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of city clerk.
All the duties of the office of city clerk.
For the city of New Brunswick.
For the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to all the directors, and congratulations to everybody else in the city clerk's office, and everybody who's even here. All right, items for discussion with council members, any questions?
Now, again, items of discussion, but I just wanted to congratulate everybody who was appointed, that will be appointed today, and especially getting super proud of Leslie, I think that, I was saying that I feel like a proud of her, because she is a part of New Brunswick, she has earned that position, she was blessed with a great mentor by Don Terese, and that's what a leader and a visionary should do when a mentor, just to bring up those underneath you, so that way one day they could take your place, that's what a leader does, so I thank you also, Dan, and I wish you, and I know that you do excellent as a business administrator, I'm looking forward to these new changes, so congratulations again, and let's make this a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to newly appointed, newly elected vice president and president, congratulations, you guys do very well, and I can enthusiastically take that, proud I am to go, also to my other council mates who was sworn in yesterday, Kevin Rebecca, congratulations, you know, yesterday was a great day, and to the mayor, congratulations on his swearing yesterday, keep moving the city forward. Thank you. Again, congratulations to everybody, a warm thank you to President Fleming for his two years of service and doing what's he believed to be right for the city of New Brunswick at all times, hopefully I can follow his footsteps, and I think we'll have some, a couple more angels in heaven between my mother and Mrs. Egan watching over us this year. All right, public comments, we put a public comment again, your name, address, one-time chair, please, up to five minutes.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, 333 Somerset Street, just want to start off saying Happy New Year's to everyone, what a happy, happy day, I just have a couple of quick questions tonight, and that'll be it. My question is, I know French Street is county now, French Street going into 27, is 27 county road or state road?
The Route 27 from the Mile Run Creek, which is right by La Corona Restaurant, anything south of that is NJDOT, again, from the Mile Run Creek Bridge north, which would be basically Sanford Florence, but all the way north until you get up to the train station is county.
Okay, and then, I understand it going Route 27 towards Franklin, that's still county?
From roughly at the Corona Bar, where if you notice that, there's a creek, from that creek, the mid-spin of the creek going southwards towards Franklin, the state.
Okay, thank you, and then also, I'd just like to say, thank you for the great work with the New Brunswick City of Traffic Department, what an excellent job they did, due to where they did have to redo Somerset, Somerset Street and Lewis Street, due to where you had a major car accident there, I just say, great work they did in a matter of time there. And then another question I do have, where far as due to where I noticed that you send out the new plans for recycling garbage and everything, do you feel, or I don't know if the city did put them in Spanish and Spanish, send them out to residents?
I mean, who if they already go in Spanish?
They are.
Yeah, well, normally the recycling schedule is a two-sided, four-page document, I haven't personally seen one, but I know that is the city's.
They detect at least.
I have seen them, I mean, the regulations, some of that had came out in their packages. So, okay, what would be the rules if no one's following the rules, far due to where you said, okay, no more bags are recycling, will not be picked up, so it will be left there?
I don't think that's quite within.
As I advised the council even two, three ago, we are going to propose amendments to the recycling ordinance, which will capture those particular new regulations with respect to offenses or violations, we obviously are very sensitive to people's habits, I know in my own household, I put my recycling in a plastic bag and put it in the bin, obviously it's going to be a change for a lot of people to get used to, so I think the ordinance will reflect a process and procedure, that people will be warned and educated before there will be any monetary sanctions. a process and procedure, that people will be warned and educated before there will be any monetary sanctions taken. But to answer your question, the ordinance is probably about a month away, the amendments, and obviously, if there's no ordinance in place, no one will get fined or penalized for violating. But we're trying to educate people, and that's why we're rolling these regulations out soon as possible.
So do you, which way do you feel will be better, no clear bags, or just the ordinary, just putting recycling? Because one way that I'm looking at it, due to where I see it a lot, that was the same situation with garbage for a while. Do you really accept, expect the workers to pick up every bottle, something that drops off the ground? And like I said, related to garbage and recycling, that's the worst thing, that's really what's littering New Brunswick, and how it's being put on the workers to do extra work, that's where I'm leaning to.
The garbage, if I can, I don't know what it's more always referred to, garbage still has to be in a secured container or a bag, you can't just put loose garbage. We're talking about recycling.
Okay, that's what's.
The recycling materials are to be commingled in the can, not in a plastic bag. And just so it's clear, that's not something the city of New Brunswick is elected to do. We have been directed by the county and the recyclers, so this is the new procedure that we have to follow. Apparently, bags cause difficulty with the machines that separate the recycling materials, and cause malfunction, and adds to the cost, and obviously, we want us to not have excessive costs passed on to the city. So that's the reason why they're changing the procedure, not because we're looking to make it more difficult for residents. This is coming down from the county and from the recycling companies.
Okay, and then a situation due to where I, actually, that wasn't my five minutes, due to where she was letting it run as you were talking to it, too.
I mentioned before this, we're gonna try to, there's always a running clock, so.
Oh, well, that's something new, but okay, for the future, I will understand that. And due to where I mentioned before, it's not as bad during the winter, during summertime, where it was an issue, and you said you were gonna work out, where people are putting their garbage out on holidays, and then letting it sit, sit around, what, for a whole week or so? That was about a month ago, not here today, where I asked you about that. So someone, are you gonna find them, or what, putting out your garbage when it's not supposed to be put out, and then sit all week, due to where, like I said, how New Brunswick is really, do you walk around like you do? Believe me, I know you do, where like I said, New Brunswick is really starting to look bad and smell bad.
Well, they're gonna force it, just as they did before, whatever, so long as they know what's going on. So if you know anything, definitely give us a call or whatever like that, but definitely, the old enforcement is still gonna be on.
Well, what you said the last time, you were gonna do something, like I said, wow, who puts their garbage out on New Year's? And then, what, it has to stay outside until the following garbage, like I said, that smells horrible.
It shouldn't.
So that's what I, that's the point is, due to where, like I said, no one's here again to speak upon it, but yes, I hope the city will, you will do something, to send out warnings to people about, give them fines, because like I said, wow, even just to sit on your porch, when somebody does that, how bad it smells. Like I said, I know you're a witness, due to where you walk around as much through New Brunswick, and the same thing with city council, yes, I hope New Brunswick will look forward to doing recycling and garbage a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else?
Good evening, Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I gotta ask, whose idea was it to do the running clock?
As council president's, I ultimately had to say.
So it was your idea?
I'm not saying it was my idea, but definitely my idea to do it.
Okay. I thought the celebration yesterday was very nice, and I appreciate being able to be there, share your comments on that. Can you tell me, I know we got into it a little bit last week, why is the city creating the deputy chief position?
Something the mayor asked for, and we had no problem.
Okay, can you ask the mayor's office to explain why that's something they want?
You can.
Could you, through the chair, could you ask the representatives of the mayor's office who are here tonight at our meeting?
Mr. Council President, I think, after a while, when I answered that question, that organizationally, they felt they needed some supervisors to help the police department perhaps run a little more efficiently. I don't run the police department, but I'm sure Director Caputo has the knowledge and the wherewithal beside what he needs and doesn't need with respect to supervisors in those capacities. And it was a request, the mayor was in agreement with it, and the council amended the ordinance accordingly. I'll just, Cradell, wait and see, how the changes could affect the police department or not, on the efficiency perspective, but I think it's only for the better.
Thank you for the answer. Can you tell me when does, I guess, the mayor plan on promoting somebody to that rank?
I have no word.
Could you ask the mayor's office, is there a timeline for this, now that the position is in?
I don't think they have it in any.
Okay. Why have a deputy chief rather than a deputy director?
It's just what the mayor decided, that was best for the police department, along with Director Caputo.
Okay, you see why it would be helpful to have Director Caputo here at this point, I mean.
Really, just wait for five minutes.
I mean, are you serious, that these questions, that you keep referring to Director Caputo?
You can ask a citizen of the city council.
Great point, that's why I went to the parking authority board meeting, and I went up to Director Caputo after the meeting.
Parking authority.
After the meeting, though. After the meeting, very politely, I knew you used to be on the parking authority board, very politely, no recording, no camera. I just went up to him, I said, hey, so deputy chief, why, you know, why are you doing that? He said, Charlie, you know the drill, you gotta email somebody, I'm not gonna, basically, I'm not going to answer your question unless you email somebody. So I emailed Captain Miller, the person who wants me to email four questions. Captain Miller just got back from vacation, he tells me today, these questions should be directed to City Hall/Mayor's Office. As we discussed at the last meeting, the mayor's office does not engage with questions from me, because they believe that I run a political publication. And so, where do I get my answers then? I'm coming to you, and I'm using all five of my minutes to get the answers. Can you please ask the people who are here from the mayor's office, why a deputy chief and not a deputy director? We used to have a deputy director, we have a former deputy director in the house tonight, right?
He was ever deputy director.
He was never, okay.
The deputy director's position still exists.
There's still a possibility that he could do that, too.
Okay.
To the mayor, there are options.
But you passed an ordinance creating this new position, so why not use the one that existed and you used before? It's just principle.
It just depends on what he decides is gonna be the best for the police department.
Okay, I mean, that, just, my point is, it'd be great to hear from him, and it'd be great if he came to these meetings like the other directors do. And here's a question, will the deputy chief attend council meetings?
If he so chooses, it's up to him or her.
Okay, well, I think you should encourage your director, the highest ranking, or the leader of the department, to be here. I know Captain Miller does come to most of the meetings, and that's nice, but if the buck stops with the director, he should really be here. And then, final couple points, I wanted to ask, just if the council has any comment on the $350,000 settlement in the case brought by the three police officers, one of whom is still with the city? Any comment on the $350,000 settlement of that case?
You know, that's the process, that's the way it goes for me, so, that's what happens.
You think that means there might have been some merit to the allegations? They were very serious allegations, as you know.
I don't see it that way.
Okay, well, somebody who's willing to pay $350,000 to get a case dismissed, tells me that there's something there. Yeah, I think it's worthy of looking into it further. I'll just end by reminding you that there's still a lot of folks that make less than $15 an hour on the city payroll. Any chance we could get an ordinance to change that?
There's always a chance.
Okay.
Look forward to working, you have a good day. Take care. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none.
Who's food charity? Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro-Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?